Eddie?
We're gonna be all happy.
Um, we're very into timing. And so the only way we can get done in time is if we start.
Usually start. Well.
Mr. Coop is it, so he'd like to make a motion.
Hey, we just had a chapter on school finance, so we can stop it.
What do you? They can give my report.
They could tell you about categorical and black gradients and.
Give me a brief definition of categorical.
I think you should just ask. It goes towards a specific area, like theater or like the math. It was like, I went to your theater and saw, we got eight thousand dollars.
I took the pictures.
And I was like, go us. And ask them what state has the purest educational example of funding.
Easy and straightforward, or why do you find it here?
It has like realistic but high expectations for student achievement and they do put money at problem schools and they show improvement. Like they have that.
There's actually a tracing. Well, I would have to say Iowa's got the most confusing formula for school funding.
But it's also ranked as the most.
When I first started this job, I'm out served on Minnesota School Board for twenty-five plus years. When I first started this job, I came home and I was telling her about, and she's just like, why? And like, I don't know.
Those are just the rules.
This is what I've been taught.
Yeah.
She's like, that makes no sense. I'm like, I know. It's gone.
Well, I apologize.
All right.
Got hard Christmas movies?
I knew we did that Christmas movie. I'm gonna lose sort of like the under over of the twelve.
Yep. Okay, it is five o'clock. Call the meeting to order. One need for the allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Jackie, you have a roll?
I do.
We have us, we have the corral. Item C, adoption of the agenda. Have any changes? Other than it's included in those similar list of bills, but Jackie did post some of these this afternoon. Anything else?
I don't have any changes.
Entertain a motion to adopt the agenda when you're ready.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second. Motion and second to adopt the agenda, all in paper, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Here you. Item B, public input on non-agenda items. Do you have anybody here signed up to speak? So we'll go ahead and move on to item E, approval of minutes. Of the public hearings and spring meeting.
Correct, it was all inclusive in one, but yes, hold there.
I don't have any comments on those. Jackie particularly since you may need to take a quick review. Say anything else, any comments? Motion and second to approve the minutes of the past meetings, all in there, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Item P, approval of financial items, reports, similar list of bills.
First report, I'll review quickly, the annual treasures report for October 2022. As you can see, revenues are up, or excuse me, down around two hundred and sixty-five thousand from the previous year, but I I don't see any indication that that'll continue, so I think that's just a timing issue. And expenditures are up a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars again. That's probably gonna be right around where we'll be, maybe slightly higher throughout the year, but I'll keep reporting on that. And cash is up four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And that will be less this year than it has been in the previous years, just because we have, we did not let be as much cash as we've done in the past. So our cash will stay up hopefully, but it just won't be continuing to increase like it has in the past. The next report we'll review for is special revenue funds. Management, physical plant equipment, playground and save as well as debt service. We've been talking a lot about the three of these funds over the last several months with the capital outlay projects. As you can see, the balances are there. And management basically is ninety-five thousand dollars. That is the balance after all of our insurance premiums are paid. So we're sitting at a fairly good balance, which is what we intended, so that we can fund early retirements as they come in. I think we're have indication that possibly there'll be some early retirements this year, so we have balances to do that as well. And have anything else to report on that one either? And more importantly, just kind of what you decide going forward in your capital outlay. And then activities report, activity fund. Has been building back up. We were down quite a ways after the successes of last year and will have a few more successes this year as we've seen. So that'll take a hit here and there, but we do have some donations into that that I think Mr. Richorth has been reviewing his report. Hot lunch, student construction, FFA farm and our split fund. So that's all I have to report in financial summary list of bills. Again, I did add an additional list today of some last minute items and officials for December. If you have any specific questions, be glad to try and answer those. It's a long list.
Student construction funded.
Yes.
Eighty-six thousand dollars in the hole.
Yes.
We start with somewhere around twenty thousand before this house we started?
We started in the very beginning with a thirty thousand dollar.
Grant.
With grant. So that's kind of been my basis. But I have to go back and actually look and I can pull that up real quick and tell you where.
So would it be fair to say we put somewhere around a hundred and ten thousand dollars in this house? Materials? I, I think this is accurate of what we spent on this house. Fifty-five. Yep.
Me, I can tell you real quick, we remember we ended last year in the hole, and so I have to go back. Just give me a minute.
Don't leave me exactly. Just trying to get a feel for where should we expect to or need to sell it for? Yep. I think the last one we sold for something?
Seventy, seventy-seven.
Seven, I think. So materials costs really are the difference here this time.
It's a little bit bigger of a house.
Yeah.
So in 2020, we had a down payment of ten thousand dollars. And final payment was given to us in June of 2021 for sixty-two five, so we sold it for seventy-two five. And then my fund balance. Is June thirtieth, 2020. Looks as though we had around twenty-five thousand dollars that we started in twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So I would say you're fairly accurate. Yeah, so maybe, maybe ten to twelve thousand dollars, so that twenty-five, but yeah.
There's already a couple of community members that have inquired about the current house we're building. So once we kind of get through the end of this year and our current projects. Grant, all of that conversation with Grant about are we gonna be ready this spring? And can we perform the same type of auction like we did two years ago? And then again, the focus is on all the projects that he wants, and the learning experiences he wants to give the kids. You remember last time we sold it and then we spent the next year basically customizing it with Dave? We'll do, we can enter into that same process again, or we can just sell it as is and start a new house. But I'm really gonna like bring it, kind of lead that process about what are the things that he wants to make sure the kids can experience. You know, I think a couple of weeks ago, they had the electrician out there in Meyer Electric in the kids. So what other types of things like that do we want to make sure that the kids experience? Still the first year of this house? Year two.
Year two.
Yep. Okay, sorry.
Yeah, we sold, we did, we took the down payment at the end of nineteen twenty. We customized it twenty twenty-one, we started again in twenty-one, twenty-two, so this is the second year.
Start house. Okay, good, thank you.
Anything else, Jackie?
No, just other specific questions about bills, if there's any, and I don't have anything to report. I've received no information from the audit.
Entertain a motion to approve those three items, you ready?
Make a motion to approve those three financial items.
Motion and second to approve the list of financial items as presented. All in paper, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Move on to item G, administrative reports, discussion items, Mr. George.
Yeah, I'm not gonna go through all the students that we're recognizing, but you can see the lift is significant as we wind down our fall activities from fine arts to athletics. Lots of kids and programs doing really great things. So I'll just kind of reference the what's in front of you on the printed agenda, what's available on the assembly online. Cause there's unfortunately, there's many kids to list them all, but I'm really, really proud of all the all the kids and all the staff members for leading that. And then also listed there in the community members. You can see the individuals, families and businesses in town in the school district or maybe alumni as well that monetarily provided donations and gifts back to the football program to offset our costs for transportation and lodging and food over the course of the last two weeks, back and forth to Cedar Falls. So it goes without saying, we really appreciate their support. And hats off to the football team on their state championship, so. Would I have anything to add? Principals? Recognition?
Kevin?
I will list it in the minutes, so it will be at least both sides in that way as well as the person listening.
Yeah, we'll get something in the paper too, to make sure that that's you know, for those that don't watch online or read the minutes, we'll get something in the paper. It's a long list of successes for sure.
Hold the count, yeah.
Okay, we will, any other, sorry. Give any other correspondence on your report?
No.
We'll move on to principal reports about conference attendance for each of them. Mr. Hartman, play flippers?
Yeah, I agree. I broke it down and included every grade level, say section, and then the grade levels whole. You see, we had very high attendance. Seen that the new JMC scheduler worked as far as the correspondence between the teachers and the parents or families. Most of them, what our process is, we're members that if a parent does not show up, we still make sure we send home that information to the parents. And try to reach out to them, at least with a phone calls, let them know what's coming and talk about those things, even if they don't show up. Just to make sure that we're on the same page at the end of the first quarter. Kind of tag team that it is, it's midterm for us this week on Wednesday. And we partnered up those names that they didn't show up to conferences and they're deficient according to our midterm list, that we then we make sure we have a parent either come in or a conference with a teacher, myself and that parent, because we want to make sure that those parents know what's going on. Grades are accessible at any time through Canvas and those types of things, so it's not like there's any surprise out there and that's the big thing message. I want to keep trainings that there's no surprises for parents and families. So you know, it's a process where it's a great spot check where kids are at and where things can be worked on. And so I was really happy to see that that schedule worked, but also for our kids, that a lot of families showed up. We were having really high percentage, there was just one or two kids per section, which overall is still very acceptable. And then an overall percentage of ninety-five percent, so we really have to be happy about that for the fall practice. So, yeah. We'll keep trudge annoying.
Good for that. Do we have any kind of metric as to how we compare surrounding districts as far as elementary kind of attendance?
When we talk about it as our principal group, there are still a couple of schools that manually schedule what we used to do, where you bring all the teachers in a room and try to schedule conferences like that, which is such a waste of time. And so I think the, for us at least, I think the average is very high and I think we, we're very close to what you see in a lot of areas. Parents are really involved at earlier ages, see what they do to help their kids. You know, I, I don't know if anyone can ever get a hundred percent. We try to, and that's our goal, but at the same time, you know, I think what I'm talking about, there's so much family backing in our Northwest Iowa, I think it's very similar.
Questions for Steve? Right. Start the one?
Yeah, you can see the numbers up there. Seventh and eighth grade, ninety-seven percent. Those who were unable to conference with in person, were making phone calls, emails, reaching out to post, just any type of contact. High school, fifty-eight parents were, had signed in. Sign in as they came through conferences. But fifty-eight parents or parent groups came through in the two nights, they were the high school staff, so it's steady flow. Percentage wise, you know, it's hard to tell with, with multiple kids that potentially are in the high school that you're there to visit with. But that's typical of high school, you know, and Andy's question with the elementary, that's what high schools are always debating on how to get more people. Especially the ones that you want to see. And then, so that's kind of our discussion as a, as a staff, there's a couple of bullet points that we're really hitting on. Pros and cons of our student like conferences at middle school level, so it's been met with some resistance, but it's also been favorable for some. So we're just trying to determine what's the best path moving forward. Best scheduling practices, like Steve said, JMC seem to work really well for us. Those middle school conferences are still hard scheduled, but they're just with that one advisor instead of with all teachers. So it's kind of how can we get teachers more available that evening, however, they are reachable at any time during the year via email, phone call or just stopping to visit, so. And then better attendance at the high school level, and that's across the board with the conference. And you know, principals that I did it with, it's how do we get more folks interested in coming to conference and we don't want to put any real, you know, weight on it, you know, as far as grades, extra credit, that's not equitable. But how do we get more people to come in and visit face to face? So we're trying different things, we, you know, during the COVID time, we did do them in the classrooms and it was hit or miss. Kind of about the same percentage of people came through the door, so. Always looking and researching for ideas, but overall, you know, all the conversations were very, very good from what I was able to see and observe and talk with our staff and our parents, so.
You think the high school, maybe there's, you know, middle school and elementary, the communication is there because they have to sign up and do all that. Where being, I have kids that kind of are adult, three and six grade, eighth grade, high school. And I know about conferences because of my younger kids, the high school one. I don't know if I remember getting much communication just about high school except for kind of thing. It wasn't supposed to.
Yeah.
So is there just maybe some better communication that could help with that? If you only have high school kid, I can see where it might be easy to miss conferences a little.
Yeah.
There could be emails that went out, but I think also.
Yeah. I think that's, as far as whole, maybe there's not as many. If you're someone that we would like to conference with, you're getting those individual ones and you're just. Remember you have something else going on. Yeah, I haven't. Looking at different ways of doing it, but it just seems that I probably try to be in the classroom or even virtual or, you know, I think most people at the high school level are those that are staying up to speed with what their kids are doing are looking on Canvas frequently or emailing frequently or making phone calls and they don't see what's this night different from any other day. Make contact with the teacher.
I think number one, our parents use Canvas a lot and there's a lot of emails that go back and forth, but people aren't waiting to tell conferences that there's concerns. And I think the only way to maybe increase that is to specifically invite and teachers are calling and saying, we've got conferences on Monday and Thursday. You know, I'd really like to see you, can I schedule you in for this particular time? The other places I've been, that's really the only thing that improves that versus the open house. It's that individual connection from that teacher to that family, so. I think trend at Central Lion is far too often, we see the kids and the families, their kids are doing really well. And so it's an easy, comfortable conversation. It's unfortunately the kids where teachers have already been engaged and emails and phone calls have happened. Those families aren't attending parent teacher conferences.
Those that maybe we're seeking to make some adjustments with or make improvements to those. See, and although fifty is a low number, it's typically lower in the spring.
And if you're, whether you're communicating with parents at one or two days of conferences or other times, I mean, the important thing is that communication. So if that's occurring, then you're doing what we can to support those students.
I'm sure Jason keeps track of all, all the meetings that he has, but there's a concern. And he's talked to them, to the parents and the student. And things aren't getting better based on the teacher and the family that are in his office or whatever. Making sure that we address that issue.
Yeah, I think it was the fastest time I've ever been here. Or we're just moving table to table and I think we had to wait a couple of years. Can be a good thing for parents and students to be all engaged and on the same page and. Communication for sure is key to make sure parents know that that's available to them. Any other questions for Jason? Okay. Move on to item three, superintendent for Mr. George.
Yeah, I don't know why this is so small. It is. I put a lot of information in the, in kind of the details in the announcement section here of my report specifically around the save financing. Carrie, Dave, Jackie and I had a really good Zoom with Matt Gillespie a couple of weeks ago in regards to all the options that the board has in terms of our save bond. And so I included some attachments. The big thing that I want to reiterate is even though, you know, we had our public hearing for six and a half million dollars, we overestimated based upon what the bids come back in. We didn't want to have fewer dollars than ultimately what we had estimated. So I included an additional spreadsheet there that kind of runs through all the projects that were identified during the study. The estimates, and so that number is right around four point seven six million dollars. Again, some of the projects we're gonna use cash, much like the maintenance garage that we did this last summer. Phases two and three of, of the elementary classroom remodels and the window replacements, we'll use save dollars and PEPAL dollars, but cash instead of putting it in the bond. But ultimately, once the bids come back, that's what's gonna determine that final dollar amount that we ultimately bond. The final dollar amount as well as what plan do we use, twelve year, fifteen year, et cetera? Exactly. And so we can stretch it out to twenty years if we want to. Again, the longer the term, like we all know, the more interest we pay, the shorter the term, the less interest. Many times the shorter the term, the lower the interest rate. But again, as we start that process, what we probably spent the most time talking about with Matt was the difference between a local kind of bidding process versus a public bidding process. So in that local, we kind of target some local banks or some banks that we've worked with in the past in terms of these similar types of bonding projects. Or a public is again nationwide, we are publicizing it to any bank that wants to bid on those. So again, the difference between those two, in the local, typically the interest rates are higher, but the fees are much lower. And so I think as we've talked through this process and we've done other projects, we try to keep our business local if we can. But the timeline still allows us that if we go through that kind of local process and we aren't comfortable with the interest rate or we're not comfortable with the fees that are associated with that, we still have time to then switch to a public offering and again, see what our options are. So the twelve year and the fifteen year models that I put in there still allows us the cash flow to take care of all of our ongoing maintenance needs, all of the capital projects that we are planning for, whether they're buses or technology. So we're comfortable with twelve, but ultimately we will have to see what that comes back in. Twelve, fifteen. But hopefully we can do something more on the local scale and, and keep our dollars hopefully in our school district, but if not in our school district somewhere. So anything else you guys wanted to add to that? And Matt will help us through that evaluation process. What makes the most sense in terms of the term? To a local, but to expand it beyond that, so he's been very good. Yeah, he's been tremendous to work with, so. Do we know if the bonds will have a callable feature? Yep, so that's a part of his, you know, recommendation is in that will typically it's like a five year call. So if things continue to increase as far as the save revenues, sales tax, and we could pay early. We could entirely pay off the entire note after that five year time period. So I would, if you've got questions on any of the documents I put in there, I'm happy to answer them, but again, but our next meeting, once we have the bids, then we'll also have some engagements to make with Piper Sandler, Allers and Cooney as a bonding council that will allow us to start that process in January. So ultimately, we have money in our hand by March, so we can begin as soon as the snow melts with any of those projects. The other thing in my report, you know, hopefully everybody's kind of looked at their calendars, but if we need to change our meeting date on December nineteenth, I want to make sure that I'm communicating again back to Matt Gillespie for those documents. But as we look at our December nineteenth, there's a lot of activities going on. Same thing on Tuesday, the twentieth. And then that Wednesday, the twenty-first, we don't have any activity. Wednesday, the twenty first, we don't have any activities, but it's church night. And then Thursday of that week is. Our last day before Christmas break. We can't move it any earlier because of the timelines that we're. Under for the bid process. But we can keep it the same and everything will be totally fine, but if we're going to move it, I want to make sure that I'm communicating to everybody. So again. If we're going to move that, just know in our new business, whenever we set our public hearing date. We're going to have to adjust that as well. So.
You want to talk about that date now?
Yeah, does yeah, does anybody have any? Conflicts as I look at that? You know, we've got middle school basketball. Middle school girls wrestling and then JV. And JBR JV boys wrestling and JBR girls and boys basketball.
So I think it's worth.
We did it pretty well the last time, so hopefully nothing new is.
Okay, that's good.
Good Amy?
Yeah.
Right. Okay. Well. Item number four. Board committees, do we have any? Committee, we got some of it from Mr. Jordan.
Yeah, I think the finance committee was the only committee that met this last month, so.
All right, move on to item H, old business. One item under there, which is the second reading of the. Same policy.
Yep, so I made. The policy that you have here has the updated language in number five, as we had noted. During the course of our meeting in October, so. We're removing the rule of eighty eight. So if you. Aping the rule age of fifty five and been with Central Lion for ten. Continuous years.
Any other questions on that? We'll entertain a motion to approve the second reading. Can I make a motion to approve the second reading?
Second.
Motion and second to approve the second reading. Early retirement Senate policy four fifteen point zero one. Say aye. Opposed? Move on to item I, annual meeting. You.
We'll move into nominations and vote for president of Central Lion Board of Directors, so at this time I'll accept nominations for president.
Nominate Andy Kube.
I have a nomination and a second for Andy Kube as president, if there's no other nominations. Or discussion nomination cease and Andy is president of the Board of Directors. So moved and I'm turning it back over to you.
Item number two, nominations and vote for vice president. Nominate Mr. James. Scott, second, are there any other nominations? Okay. Dan will be your vice president. Item three, administration of the oath of office to the.
I'll do both of you at the same time, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa? And that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of President. And Vice President for the Central Lion Community School District as now or hereafter as required by law. If yes, answer, yes, I will do so.
Yes, I will do so.
I hereby certify I have administered the oath of office as required by Iowa Code, section two seventy seven point twenty eight on the twenty second day of November. Two thousand twenty two, in my capacity as Secretary of the Board of Directors for the Central Lion Community School District.
Moving on to item four, committee selection and appointment, so. Mr. George had added the current. Committee assignments into simbly and they are listed there. I need to read along, but. One of the discussions discussions that Dave and I had was. Personal situation, which I appreciate everybody being flexible with. Mr. George's upcoming midyear review. It might make sense to have someone else in my place on the personnel committee in this upcoming year. Dave, you have any additional thoughts on that?
No, I think we've. Discuss that with Mr. Jordan. Traditionally, we have. The president has. Administered for the most part taken notes, et cetera, driven the process for the. Superintendent evaluation. We'd like to move that to the personnel committee this year for a couple of reasons. One of them being just plain having more than one person. People exposed to that process, that's a good idea. And takes some of that a little. So. Personnel would be one of the committees that would potentially change people on. Again, partially to 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 help Andy out in his personal situation. From a time commitment standpoint, I'm certainly willing to continue in that role. It would make sense for for one of us at least to remain on the personnel committee to maintain the consistency. So that would be one of the ones that we'd look for somebody else to move into that personnel committee. Role. Amy, Scott or Carrie, any of you have a particular interest, so the other thing that the other primary responsibility. Personnel committee is the negotiating CLA. When that time comes around. Say salary negotiation, there isn't much to negotiate other than that anymore.
Correct.
So it's, I think we've probably had. Four or five sessions this past year, roughly, something like that, which is maybe a little bit more than usual that I've been exposed to. So we're typically in that three to five meetings. Thereabouts, so typically the four school starts. So. That would be my thoughts anyway, and let's see, have anything to add? Someone else to 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 move into that role and to take.
Yeah, and of course, there's certainly time to give feedback on the move off of a certain committee and to something else. Time to do it, so.
Yeah, and we can be flexible, my my thing anyways, we've got to be flexible as we move through the rest of these and understand does it make sense for. One person move here to there, et cetera, things like that, so.
So who would like to fill that personnel committee spot?
I mean, I'd be willing to if you are looking for someone, only because the committees I'm on have not taken much time, I mean. Like I feel like you're on the building and grounds and I feel like you've had a lot of those meetings and I. I mean, I'd be willing to, but.
Probably will take some more time here.
Right. I'm willing to if you.
Yeah, I've been just. I think you're on three already anyway, or Jay. Yep, I was on. Personnel, sharing. Policy, yeah, and I think part of that was. Last year, we assigned these committees before Amy was on.
Yeah.
So they were just left as vacant and whoever got in here was going to get filled with spots. I don't get it with.
Yeah.
With a motion or anything for that or do we?
I think we can do them kind of all together.
We can do them all together.
Once you get it all discussed, it'll just be one day motion. I'm making notes, so.
Everybody okay, then we want to see any other changes?
I'm I'm fine with. Buildings and ground, I think it maybe makes sense when you're kind of in the middle of it, so. Think it makes sense and then finance, it's kind of nice to have someone.
Doing both.
Doing both a little bit, so.
Yep.
Fine.
I'm good as well, I'd like to stay on sharing. On the ground since we're in the middle of.
Yeah.
So. Good?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm good, are you good with staying on sharing committee?
Yeah.
And policy?
Okay, so I think the only change then is for Amy to take my place on the personnel committee. Can I have a? Motion and second to approve those committee assignments?
I'll make a motion to approve those committee assignments as noted.
Are we keeping assessors, foundation and school improvement as is?
Yes.
Okay, those are as part of that, okay, just making sure.
We probably didn't address those specifically with those people that are on that, but.
It's before everyone, I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, they're on the system.
Yeah, just want to make sure everybody is reviewing that as well, okay, go ahead. Got it.
Motion. We have a motion and second to approve the committee selections and appointments. Discuss, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, item five, determination of time and place of regular school board meetings. Second Monday at seven o'clock, but I think this board's done a really good job of being flexible when we need to.
We we fairly stay on that second Monday at seven o'clock, but yes, we definitely look for time.
So look for everybody.
Makes sense, okay.
Okay, and then we'll we'll take number six at the same time, are there any? Changes we need to make to the board meeting procedures, I I did not see any same form of views.
Yeah, we just updated Amy's information in there, that's really the only thing and. As you can see there, we put it out. For any of our visitors that might show up in person or have a call and inquire. This is what we reference and it's really a summary of our policies. In the meetings.
So I'll entertain a motion unless there's any other discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve items five and six when you're ready. I'll make a motion to approve items five and six on the agenda. Motion second to. Determine the time and place of regular school board meeting, it's the second Monday of each month at seven o'clock. Through the board meeting procedures that is listed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, item J, new business, Mr. George, we've got several approvals and. You know, there's hearings here, I'll do these one by one group.
If we could do them one by one.
Okay.
That way it's recorded.
Okay.
Appropriately.
Just because of the contractual obligations within, yes.
Sure, that's that's good, okay. So first item, it is. Consider approval of the proposed plans, specifications and proposed form of contract for twenty twenty three facility improvements project with FEH Design.
The, I would say the entire bid package is there on assembly. Quite extensive, seven hundred plus pages. Feel again, the buildings and grounds committee meant to review that. Beginning of. Middle of October, so I I feel really. Very confident in those. But I have anything else to add?
I would agree, we. Have been very open about what's been happening in the meetings and at the board level.
Yeah.
Any discussion on those? It's pretty clear in the specs that it's going to be a busy zone.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion to approve those when you're ready.
I'm moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the plan specs and contract for the twenty twenty three facility improvements for FEH Design, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Should carry. Item two, consider bid bid time, date and place for eleven o'clock AM Thursday, December fifteenth, twenty twenty two. Boardroom at. Yeah, it's listed for Central Lion School in Rock Rapids, I.
So again, this isn't necessarily. Yeah, a public meeting where we're going to take any action, board members don't even, we don't even need to have. It's just setting that time for when everything's due. Obviously, I'll be here, the FEH will be here, everybody's welcome if they want to join us, but we're just opening. The bits, the action will be taken at the night on the nineteenth.
We're setting it so you can document it in.
Exactly.
Like FEH is here.
Yep.
So one is here one day and then the next two, then DGR is for the next one, yeah.
I'm going to take a motion to approve that.
Sorry, just have a quick question, will FEH and DGR both put together the bid summary then? Yes. So we have a summary document that compares, assuming there are multiple bids. Exactly, so that's why we've got a couple of days between when we open them and the meeting itself.
Yeah, that's what Matt was saying, he wanted some time to review them.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second to set the bid date at eleven o'clock. Thursday, December fifteenth, boardroom at Central Lion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Item three. Consider approval of proposed plans, specs and proposed form of contract for the twenty twenty three parking lot in athletic complex projects, DGR engineer.
Same thing, I think this is around a hundred and twenty pages from DGR, similar type of language, but not as. Many projects, so. Yeah. Gary Kurtz, been great to work with at DGR and. Appreciate his his time and his collaboration through the process.
Questions on those plans and specs? Let's entertain a motion when you're ready.
I'll make a motion to approve the. And specs from DGR.
Second. Here we have a motion and second to approve the plans and specs for the. Twenty twenty three parking lot, complex projects, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Should carry. Item four. Consider bid time, date and place for eleven o'clock AM Friday, December sixteenth, twenty twenty two, in the boardroom at the address listed for at Central Lion School in Rock Rapids, Iowa. This would be the the bid opening for the.
Yep.
DGR parking lot.
Same thing like you're saying, Dave, Gary will put together a summary. And we'll be able to. Provide that to the board. At the meeting on Monday, the nineteenth.
Entertain a motion when you're ready. Make a motion to approve. Second. Motion and second to set the bid time and place for eleven o'clock. Friday, December sixteenth, in the boardroom. Central Lion School for the twenty twenty three parking lot complex. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item five, consider public hearing on the twenty twenty three facility improvement projects for six fifty five PM. Monday, December nineteenth, twenty twenty two, the boardroom at Central Lion High School in Rock Rapids, Iowa.
So again, just more opportunity for the community to ask questions. So we can provide them clarity before those bids are ultimately. Approved or rejected at that same meeting's meeting. Just a transparency component in the law.
Wasn't the public hearing for both projects?
Yes.
Facilities and the parking lot.
They don't need to have their a separate one like we did initially before. And this is just again, more feedback. If the community wants to ask questions or give additional clarity.
Or we would potentially want. Yep. Questions on that? entertain a motion when you're ready.
Make a motion to approve the public hearing as noted.
Motion and second to approve the public hearing as listed, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item six. Item six, consider allowable growth and supplemental aid for twenty-one, twenty-two LEP excess costs, namely sixty-six thousand, seven hundred thirteen dollars and sixty-two cents.
Yeah, as you'll remember, you approved this last month, but last month's was incorrect because the state's site was broken. So we're starting over. So this is for limited English proficiency costs above our allocation. Uh, we are given allowable growth back for any excess expenditures. So that'd be the cost of our teacher, our summer program, supplies, and, um, a learner assistant in that program. So ask for you to approve. So I can apply to the stage for the correct amount. Other amount, I I think it was forty-five thousand or fifty-seven thousand or something like that. So slightly we have had a heck of a time with the portal and state's site in the last month. I'll make a motion to approve the allowable growth for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two.
We have a motion and second to approve the allowable growth for LEP excess costs as listed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Security. Item seven.
We can take, um, items seven, eight, and nine together, uh, simply because worded out there for you, but they do want you to be aware that you are applying for three separate amounts. Um, and I have to word it that way in, in my application, but what you're applying for is increased enrollment in the amount of forty thousand, seven seventy-one, uh, increased enrollment out in the amount of seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three, and, uh, increased, uh, LEP instruction beyond five years in the amount of forty-six seventy. So if you have any specific questions on what that is, but it's free standard application each year. And we have increases in all three this year. We even had that up here. So this means that we have more students. Um, and we had more students enrolling out that we weren't aware of. They're just, are new this year, not necessarily that our numbers are up. It's just ones that we weren't aware of. So ones that fall off and then ones that come on. So so I don't think our numbers are actually up at all. It's just things that we weren't aware of.
Certified enrollment. Remember last month I reported on that. We're up five and a half students. But we have more students that are in our district that are open enrolling out, much like Jackie said, that either moved into the district between, you know, the end of last year and the start of this school year.
And with the new rules, new more applications.
Exactly. So we've been bringing those, if you remember, that also changed in the law. So every time we get requests, we're bringing those to you. And you guys have already approved those and seen those. So this is the money that's then following all those kids and families.
Understood. So Jackie, your memo mentions that SBRC requires a separate motion for each option.
Correct.
No need to do that as long as you've explained it.
Correct.
So I will, any, any questions for Jackie? Otherwise I'll entertain a motion to approve seven, eight, and nine as listed.
Make a motion to approve item seven, eight, and nine as listed?
Second. Motion and second to approve items seven, eight, and nine as listed. All in favor, say aye. Opposed?
You were in part, so I didn't want to.
Yeah. Uh, item ten, hiring. Come down there, Mr. George.
No, I again, the, I will just quickly go through this. Travis Shipper is currently a middle school, uh, track coach. That position opened with Dan Snyder's, uh, retirement a year ago. And so Dan Snyder, this assistant girls' track physician is the one that made the heartbeat, had resigned in the spring. And then we have, as it says in the memo, twelve, or excuse me, fourteen middle school girls. So there's the need for a middle school wrestling, girls wrestling coach. So kind of provided some explanation there. And then Darsha is able to recruit Becky Mayo to the food service department. And then Lane Manning, the five bus drivers that you have there, he's recruited. They've passed all their exams. They've been basically subbing. We want to make their
They are not committed.
Correct. And it's really, for the most part, they're filling in. Hope there's a couple of these people will kind of job share some of those route responsibilities where they might drive a morning route or an afternoon route, but it won't be morning and afternoon.
What was the incentive for so many all of a sudden?
I think just lanes pounding the pavement and
Good, that's awesome.
I can attest to one. One is when the, when he heard their rules were changing.
Oh, yeah.
It was just like, well, I'm gonna go get it done.
Got it, yeah.
And I think that was he and at least one other one on there.
Might as well put them together.
So, yeah, the the hat on to Lane, providing the bus drivers and Darsha were I know Darsha would still like some additional help and we can use some additional bodies in food service. But I feel like we're gaining obviously with five additional bus drivers.
And Lane's been really great about sending out schedules, you know, a month or more than me. Those drivers can choose to.
Any questions for Mr. George? So entertain a motion when you're ready.
Make a motion to approve the hirings as listed.
Motion and second to approve the hirings as listed. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Moving on to item eleven, we have the first reading of the policies as listed, which are some licensed employee policies along with the wellness regulation that, uh,
Yeah.
that policy was added on. It was, it was in the agenda, but the attachment was added on later this afternoon.
Yep.
And some of these changes, as Mr. George mentions, were to kind of align some of our documentation, right?
Yeah, and if you recall, the, the collective bargaining law changed in twenty eighteen. And so these policies that reference, uh, language that is in the master contract. There are no longer any references in the master contract to the these policies. So it's just kind of aligning that that language. So really, that's what the four hundred series first readings are. And then the wellness regulation is the Wellness Committee met and there's establishing specific goals. Like Andy Cott today, when he was going through that, I had forgotten to attach that. And so again, this is the first reading. Be happy to answer any questions, whether it's tonight or between now and our next meeting. We did have committee staff members, community members, administrators, that students actually were also part of that. Identified these as kind of the goals for the, the wellness policy. So so those are the first readings. The reviews, again, little to no changes in the, in those. If they are, again, it's, it's just aligning to the ISP language. So the first reading ones would be brought in December for second reading. If you've got continued questions, be happy to answer them. The reviewed ones, we went.
Any questions on those here, first reading, set a review policies? Otherwise, I think the motion can be to approve the first reading of the policies as listed and view of policies as. Second. Motion and second to approve the first reading of the policies as listed and view of the policies as listed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Security. Announcement states to remember.
Okay. Yeah, I, again, I just, I put all of our, um, kind of our winter activities in their first events. Um, we've got the first girls' basketball games tonight. And then the boys, whether it's basketball or wrestling, will begin here after Thanksgiving. Again, continued, uh, fine arts con, concerts, whether it's the elementary concert December sixth, or the high school concert the following week. It's gonna be a busy month of December. So I appreciate, um, conversation earlier about our next meeting will stay on the nineteenth.
Any other calendar questions? Move on to the building.
Kids don't take care of themselves. You will? I just wanted to get the battle.
Still giving it to them.
You know, with the easy one though, you basically just have to make sure it looks like there's coinciding.
Amy, the whirlwind football weekend.
Yes.
You guys are in the cities as well?
Yeah, we went on Sunday, so.
You went to the game?
Yeah, we're Cowboys fans, so we were happy to be there.
I bet you were.
You're liking it, it wasn't so good.
No.
It was a pretty quiet stadium also.
Oh, I bet it was.
I enjoyed streaming the TV the week before.
First time I was like twelve, three away. The first time an eight-year-old team has ever been on, like, I think, like, the odds, you know, that they were supposed to like, the Vikings were, yeah. It was like the first time, I remember watching the game and I was like, oh. I guess they knew what they were doing.
That is disappointing, huh?
Yeah.
My niece works for the Vikings, so she's
Oh, really?
She's a local fan and she obviously grew up a fan, but the name during the start of the season, the only one in the whole family who's in.
Oh, really?
But then, of course, my brother wants to bring her.
I did not watch football on Sunday. I did not have it for a while. Between the championship game and the Hawkeye game. I was anxietyed out. I didn't need another.
We had it on, but we, we weren't watching the same game. Don't know.
It was fun to listen to quarterback film this week, like, just couldn't, just won't take on the game. And you get to hear kind of like the behind the scene thing that happened. I was surprised he said, I think, I think he said it with Williamsburg, that said, like, thirty-five percent of their starters are not from Williamsburg, like they get
Yeah.
They can come in, open enrollment from like, I think he said one of their best players drives twenty-five minutes.
And it's from Bill Plaine.
Yeah.
Really?
Because I think that coach was asking if we get a lot of open enrollment kids to come here. And it's just like, no.
We develop.
Yeah, and he's like, I think he's such a good athlete. Cause, you know, they played Westline before too, so I think they just knew this area.
Did he share that uh, story about Austin Blake, the former Hawkeye lineman who's now, I don't know if he's with the Rams or Chargers or whatever, donated a bunch of money to Williamsburg, probably, I don't know, five, six years ago, and they built this multimillion dollar practice facility.
Oh, really?
So that's what's kind of attracted a lot of those.
Yeah, I'm sure.
So I didn't realize that. I was on their website a week, you know, before we played the, the game, and I saw that they had this just beautiful facility.
Yeah.
They did it in preference, that it was a donation that allowed them to build it.
Right, Williamsburg.
It's right on eighty, east, or excuse me, west of Iowa City.
An hour and a half is what they had.
So it's
Founded by Cedar Rapids and between Cedar Rapids and
Yeah, it's, 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 uh, it's east.
Okay.
So trying to think the next element between Iowa City and west. They've got a big outlet mall in Williamsburg.
I just went to a wedding, you know, remember?
That's right.
I did went to a wedding there, events, supported by the help of Stan Williams.
Yep.
Do you have a family there or? Uh, a friend of the family got, their, their son got married there. And they're from Iowa City, but that's about a thirty-minute drive out there. And that's where they, just a venue, it was cheaper and So that's just the detail. It's a lease. So that's our, that's our lease payment is sixteen thousand, seven seventy-four. There really isn't any big town, other than Newton, just kind of a board on the interstate. Cornell, yeah. Otherwise, Iowa City. Otherwise, style of city. Baby. I just wanted to try to. Or the call. I know I have to give him a heads up. You know, they're part of your room. And her IV also. She's 20. No sleep, so I'm guessing it's discharged. But it's not gonna be. It's a very tall. Julia or anything. Yes. I just need some balls.
West Lion played in the semifinals a year ago. I don't, I think this first time was.
I don't recognize it in the time I've been here, but that doesn't always mean anything.
It's fine. No, Lane lost to Southeast.
So, yeah, the one way over.
Yeah. Championship game.
Championship. They lost in the championship game, year before they lost in the championship game.
So it was lost in the championship game the last two years. Yes. It was our turn.
We were 32 seconds ahead of the. Welcome on at Rams and St. Mary's before we got stuff behind the parade, so we just got in front of them. I'm way down there. We're like driving. There were huge accidents. They don't like us.
We pay for a second trophy for Georgia or how does that work? We get two, you get two trophies or whatever?
No, we get two trophies. You just get one.
Oh, okay.
You have to pay for all the extra individual medals.
If they might.
They might buy it?
I know we have to buy it.
The ones that let to me like, oh, so do they get a trophy too? And I was like, I don't know.
Yeah, you, I mean, we can, yeah, at our expense or at their expense.
Sure.
But what's most frustrating is the fact that we've got 59 football players.
Yeah.
And then an additional.
Thank you.
I don't know how many total managers and stuff, but the state only gives us 44 medals. And 44 of the commemorative footballs and 44 of the commemorative plaques.
And only nine sideline passes or whatever.
That we don't pay for the rest of those.
Is it based on the smallest 2A?
I don't even know. It's just, it's outdated and not appropriate. The other thing that's really upsetting is we only get reimbursement for $4.20 a mile. But 3A, 4A, and 5A gets $7.20 for travel.
Why is that? Yeah. Do their gas cost much?
I wanted to knock on the door at the Hilton the other night and ask, eating with all the beverages.
So.
What's that?
Non-alcoholic.
Oh, their, their, their bar was better stocked than mine at home. I have a pretty good stock at our home.
So, you know, that's Jason's on the, the athletic, the Boys Association Rep Council. So that's feedback. Because football has a different reimbursement nation than basketball does. And it's, it's, there's just not a lot of equity there. So the Girls Union does it totally different. And it'd be nice if they were just all the same. Cause there's obviously a significant difference from driving from Plowing County to Cedar Falls than. Rendy Center that was in the Class H championship that it was only 20 miles away.
Right.
Yeah.
Maybe a dumb question, but why are these all together? Like why do?
Cause that's one bill for the US Bank credit card system.
Oh, it's, okay, it's a credit.
Yes, so you're basically giving it a.
Yep.
Good looky looky to.
Yeah, rather.
I will tell you that it's one bill that was pulled out of every single month was the US Bank.
Oh, sure.
So whatever you guys aren't getting there.
Yeah.
Which is fine. It's the misappropriation of.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure. And as I communicated to our staff as much as I possibly can, if you want to try to use the credit cards, A, office use only with, you know, online purchases and that kind of thing as much as we need to. And then as far as travel, you know, just for gas, lodging as needed and any meals that you need to buy your students. But otherwise, we try to limit the use of as much as possible. For that reason, per district protection and staff protection. Thank you. Please have a, you know, ongoing, expensive on the credit card, like for vehicle washes and soup bowls and those kinds of things. Otherwise.
It'll be interesting to see if they have recommendations on that.
You know, we said, even when they were going through stuff, they didn't come to me a whole lot.
Right.
How about that?
That's the other thing that I didn't mention, you know, we've got our food service audit next Monday through Wednesday. So that'll be, and Darsha's put a lot of work in already as far as document review and. But inevitably, they'll have recommendations for improvement. And we were supposed to have this three years ago.
COVID year.
And it's just been delayed, so.
And we had staff turnover with a lot of cross-training at that time just because of COVID retirements.
Yes, first time Darsha's went through it herself too.
Yep.
You know, I keep trying to tell her, so.
I saw they won't take away your group.
Right. This is more about an improvement process for us and just trying to do what's best. But just like with our financial audit, there's always recommendations. Some of them we implement and some of them we say that's just feasible.
Entertain a motion to adjourn when you're ready.